We're waiting on him.
Are you ready?
Hi, welcome.
Good evening. No?
I hear it.
Turn it up?
It sounds good.
Okay. We are reconvening from closed session. If the city attorney would please report on that.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and council members. The council was in closed session this evening to commence the annual performance review of the city manager. During tonight's session, the city council did approve an amendment to the employment agreement for the city manager. That amendment included a modification to the term of the agreement and a provision relating to the use of vacation time. None of these provisions modified the compensation of the city manager.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilors Powers.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
I would invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayer, followed by PAC eighty-four and the flag salute. Will the audience please rise? Color guard advance. Co- color guard post colors. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of God, in the name of God, and in this scroll. To- color guard dismiss. Liz, would you please read the video statement?
The meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel from Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you, I'm asking for- for agenda approval. Are there any deletions or additions to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I have one item, please.
Please.
It's actually E five.
Oh, very good.
Proclamation.
Yes, I was gonna have that for either two. Okay. We have no presentations tonight, so we will then go to public comment as soon as the city clerk returns.
Okay, public comment. Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. First, we have Mariah Bray.
Goodne- good evening, everyone. I am Mariah Bray, I'm the chairman of your Galt Youth City Council, and I would just like to give an update about what our council has been up to in the past few months. Starting out, our council consists of eight students and four adult mentors. We have been focusing on creating fun and safe events for the youth of Galt of all ages. At the end of August, we held a teen night at the pool and skate park event for all the teens that say, "There's nothing fun to do in Galt." And they all seem to really enjoy it, so it's very positive. Currently, we are focused on two upcoming events and a Halloween party in October, which is a family event at the Chabola Center with an Addams Family theme, and crafting with Santa in December, which will be December eleventh, as a daycare type event where parents can drop off their kids while they do arts and crafts, arts and crafts, and they can go out and do shopping or run errands or whatever they need. We are also looking forward to our participation in the lighting of the tree parade, and we'll have an arts and crafts table at the Littleton Center that night. We are also looking forward to our participation in the Winter Bird Festival. We are also starting a committee of the media and marketing led by our mentor, Russ Flutie. We loving a part of the community, are very enthusiastic towards our upcoming events, and hope to see a lot of people come out and show support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mariah. Any questions to comment for Mariah? She did such a good job.
Sound a little nervous, but you did, yeah.
Very good.
You did great, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, did you want to speak during the COPS item, or do you want to speak in public comment?
Uh, I would speak on the public.
Okay. Let's talk to the speaker sheet, please.
Okay, you, Councilman Shelton pulled item E five. Did you want to move forward on that?
My purpose was just to have the proclamation read, just entirely. I did have one other comment, you know, some a little bit of pink on tonight. I was impressed with all the football teams. If you noticed, if you watch any of the football players, the pink, and national recognition. And I really just touched me, so I really appreciate that.
Yeah, me too.
And I'm glad we have the proclamation and it'll be read, thank you.
And Vice Mayor Powers has her pink bracelet on, and I wore my pink jacket, so we're with you, Councilman Shelton. If you would, if you're up to reading the proclamation, I'd appreciate it.
Let's see, a proclamation by the city of Galt proclaiming October as a National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most frequently diagnosed type of non-skin cancer and the second leading cause of cancer deaths among women in our country. This year alone, over two hundred thousand Americans will be diagnosed and nearly forty thousand lives will be claimed. As we display pink ribbons on our lapels, offices, and storefronts, we also support those courageously fighting breast cancer and honor the lives lost to this devastating disease. And whereas, thanks to earlier detection and better treatments, mortality rates for breast cancer have steadily decreased in the last decade, and whereas, knowing what may contribute to breast cancer is an important part of its prevention, risk factors for breast cancer include family and personal history, radiation therapy to the chest for previous cancers, obesity, and certain genetic changes. Getting regular screenings may help lower the chances of developing breast cancer, and women and men are encouraged to talk with their healthcare providers about their risks and what they can do to mitigate them, and to visit cancer.gov to learn about the symptoms, diagnosis, and treatment of breast and other cancers. And whereas, during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we stand with our mothers, daughters, sisters, and friends, and we recognize all who have joined their loved ones in fighting their battle, as well as the advocates, researchers, and healthcare providers whose care and hard work gives hope to those living with breast cancer. By educating ourselves and supporting innovative research, we will improve the quality of life for all Americans affected by breast cancer and one day defeat this terrible disease. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Galt, California, we do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and urge all citizens to join in this special observance.
Thank you, Liz. Councilman Shelton, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Liz, would you like to read the consent calendar?
Okay, we have four items left on the consent calendar. Number one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September twentieth, two thousand and eleven. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, agreement with SMD for the use of a plug-in hybrid electric vehicle. And number four, adoption of an ordinance, number two thousand and eleven dash sixteen of the City Council of the City of Galt adopting chapter two point nine seven of the Galt Municipal Code regarding the Commission on Aging.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on any of those items? If not, I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I move to accept consent.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, and roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Thank you, oh, aye, thank you. Motion passed unanimously. We will now go to schedule matters.
Okay, our first item, public hearing on the use of COPS funds.
Mayor, City Council, before you tonight is a public hearing on the use of COPS funding and the appropriation of the supplemental law enforcement services funding in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. One hundred thousand of that is for the current year, and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty is the estimated remaining fund from last year's balance. In nineteen ninety-six, Assembly Bill thirty-two twenty-nine was passed imposing a statewide sales and use tax for qualifying local agencies. The bill requires that all allocated money be deposited in a supplemental law enforcement fund, SLEF, to be expended exclusively for county jails, police, sheriff, and district attorney services. The city council shall appropriate existing and anticipated monies exclusively for the fund of frontline municipal police services in accordance with a written request submitted by the chief of police of the city. The amount each city receives is determined on the relative population, and that is done every January, and it's estimated through the State Department of Finance. The estimated amount that Galt Police Department this year in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve is estimated to be the same as last year, which is a hundred thousand dollars. Additionally, there's an approximately thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars in unexpended funds from the prior fiscal year that can be appropriated to this year's fiscal balance as far as twenty eleven, twenty twelve. Staff is recommending that the following expenditure plan for this year's COPS funding, sixty-seven thousand dollars for server and computer aided dispatch systems. Currently, the servers in our field reporting system, mobile data browser, and Net Motion are no longer current to, and able to accommodate software updates. We are actually, I think, three updates behind. These new servers have been, or the old servers have been in existence as far as the police department since two thousand and three, nine years ago, and require updates have been exceeded in the capacity as far as the computers. We've also lost one of the servers, and we're currently running off a desktop machine. The second request is to use the money to purchase some used vehicles from the City of Roseville. The City of Roseville had a policy where in fact they had a car for every officer. They're downsizing, and they have seven cars that have lower mileage than nine of the vehicles we have currently in use. Of those nine, three of those are the CAPS vehicles currently, and they're a nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-six, and a two thousand and one vehicle. The problem we have is this funding is for frontline, and we don't believe that frontline would be the CAPS. So what we intend to do, if in fact we purchase these vehicles, are to rotate out three of the lower vehicles we currently have in patrol, and you've probably seen them on the street as far as white vehicles, and there are two two thousand and fives and one and one, that's a two thousand and six. Total amount, as far as to purchase the cars from Roseville, was approximately twenty-five thousand dollars, and we would like to buy two additional vehicles to replace two of the high mileage vehicles and detectives, bringing the total to forty-one, forty-seven thousand dollars. Every year, we're required, as far as the police department, to go through weaponless defense training or defensive tactics. We currently are missing some equipment that we seriously need. We're looking for two-inch folding mats, that's the one you get thrown down the ground that the injury doesn't occur to the officer. We need a self-defense instructor suit, some training batons, a strike steel, and et cetera. The price of that is five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Police training for supervisors, crime scene investigations, evidence collection, problem solving, training costs at five thousand, six hundred dollars. Currently, we have four tasers that need to be replaced. They only have a certain life, they've reached that life expectancy. We'd like to replace those at four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Detective equipment, we currently in need of a GPS basic surveillance equipment, along with some simple items such as camera lenses to in fact take fingerprints on the field. It's called one-to-one with a frame, and that is two thousand, five hundred dollars. We have three handheld radars, they're quite old, and we would like to replace it with more up-to-date technology, which would be one LiDAR unit at two thousand, three hundred dollars. And then, we would like to purchase ninety Glock magazines, we have thirty pistols. Each one of those pistols take three magazines, that's what they come with when they're brand new. That's a total cost of about one thousand, eight hundred dollars. Making the total impact to the city of one thousand, or excuse me, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, being the one hundred thousand that we expect to receive this year, and the undesignated Indian Fund balance of last year of thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty. That completes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
At this time, I will open a public hearing on the expenditure of this money, and I would entertain public comment.
And I'll call up Jim Connick.
Thank you, I'm Jim Connick. I've been a CAP with Galt PD for about seven years, prior to that as SAC County SO as a volunteer. Many of you may not know what CAPS do. We take over the duties that are not the dangerous duties of sworn peace officers, so they're allowed to perform their function more effi- more efficiently. And therefore, you get a bunch of us old guys out there in these old cars that are frequently breaking down, that are inefficient, and we've been criticized for the amount of gas that they use, but we don't have a lot of choice. The light bars on them are outdated, the cars are outdated, and the mileage, most of you would have traded your car long before it gets to the condition that we're in. And the rotating of the vehicles has been typical in the organization, and so I would like to speak in favor of approving the chief's recommendation. I'd just like to add a couple of comments. We bring in a considerable amount of income to the community on an annual basis for our parking enforcement efforts, and we contribute thousands of hours. And to have us in cars where air conditioning doesn't work, where doors don't work, windows are not working right, it's barely acceptable to us old goats, and we're out there doing the best we can with what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I would just add to that, for the salary that you receive, you shouldn't have to go through that. Al Baldwin?
Al Baldwin, you know the concerns, citizen of Galt, and I'm always interested in bringing up certain things, and CAPS is one of the real good things of Galt, positive things. I think the chief wants is very good, and I think he should get them if he can, but if you could squeeze maybe a little bit for CAPS out, I would like, and if they're there now, tell me, because I don't know. But do they have digital cameras in their vehicle? First of all.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, I would suggest if they could do that, they would help the city immensely in taking pictures when they can to help assist you in certain things that maybe they can't do. It would really be a biggie for you. Secondly, we're running into the winter season right now, and I'm not sure if they have high-powered spotlights in their cars except for the flashlights that they carry, if they carry those. Can you tell me if they have those?
I believe that the cars that will be rotating down if this is approved, in fact, have spotlights because they're active, current patrol vehicles, so in fact, the spotlights are on there.
Okay, that's a plus for them, and I appreciate you even thinking about them with that spotlight. But I would like to see cameras, if possible, in it. You might be surprised, illegal parkings or RVs that are parked out there instead of sending someone else out there to check it out, they could take a picture and they could, before they spend the time going out there, you say, "Well, yeah, that warrants something." Just a thought, they see something, they could do it. It's been suggested in the past, but it's never really been done or looked into. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Al. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a resolution unless those questions or comments from the city council members.
Just a quick question. Are you still using those old fold-down mats the state gave us about ten, twelve years ago?
Yes, we are.
Definitely something needs to be replaced.
What are they?
The weaponless defense mats.
The ones that we're proposing are two inches versus those, I think, are one inch.
One inch, right.
I was just gonna make a comment, if I could.
Sure, Councilwoman Singleton.
The CAPS greatly appreciated, mostly the time they run during the day or in the early mornings, so I don't understand a spotlight thing, your issue, but, you know, he said we are getting spotlights with them, the rotating vehicles. The cameras, I'm not sure how that would work in the cars anyway, but that's something for the chief to decide on, I think.
One of the things, as far as the handheld cameras, there's a possibility of having some funding in here in the detective equipment, that we might be able to equip a couple of the cars. A digital camera nowadays is not very, very expensive, and we'll be looking into that for you.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Then I would entertain a motion.
I move to accept the funding.
I'm sorry, didn't let you finish.
Funding for the police department.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Next item, to the council office.
Use of discretionary funds, which came from Councilwoman Singleton.
Councilwoman Singleton.
Yes, I've been coming to these council meetings for a long time, and I would like to ask the council to consider letting me use some of my discretionary funds to purchase a new flag for our council chambers, as this flag's been here a long time, and it's a little rundown, and what I'd like to suggest is if I could use two hundred and ten dollars of our discretionary funds to purchase a new flag and pole, and we could possibly have the Boy Scouts or the young Marines retire this flag as they deliver the new flag. That's all I have.
Any comments or questions?
Very good.
Good idea.
Very good idea. We need a city council vote on this, so is there a motion?
I move to accept Councilmember Singleton's allocation of funds.
One second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton. Councilwoman Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, council.
You're welcome, it's a good idea. We will now go to the city manager's office.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my pleasure to present this item to you this evening. A couple months ago, broker approached the city about a piece of property that was behind the city's existing courtyard on Elm Street, about her clients wanting to sell the property and wanted to know if the city had any interest in purchasing the property. We engaged in discussion about the property. We talked about it among staff, figure out, you know, what the issues were, the needs were in the city, and determined that it would be a good fit for the city. We own the courtyard that right now houses a lot of our parking recreation maintenance functions, as well as some streets, street maintenance. We've been in need for a number of years to expand our transit operations, fueling facility, other things, and to have a vacant piece of property directly adjacent to our existing courtyard seemed to make a lot of sense for future expansion needs. What we looked at is strategically, that this made a whole lot of sense to take advantage of this, this property, and see if we could negotiate the purchase of that property with the sellers of the property, and so we engaged in negotiations to see if we could come to terms. We had the property appraised. The property is a kind of odd-shaped property, and it includes, adjacent to it, there's a single-family home as well as a barn. The city wasn't really interested in the barn portion of it, so we looked at doing a lot line adjustment or changing the boundaries, but we would just be interested in acquiring the vacant portion of the property that was, and that was, we did the appraisal on that, that appraised at about sixty-five thousand dollars. We discussed it with the property owners, they were interested in selling to the city, and we came to the agreement that sixty-five thousand dollars was the fair value for the property, and they were interested in selling. We negotiated that agreement, it's been signed by the property owners, presented to the council this evening for your consideration. Like I said, there is a lot line adjustment that's necessary for the property, so that we kind of, we carve off the single-family home that's there, and the city would just be purchasing the vacant property that allows the property owner to sell independently that home, as well as the other remaining land on there, so it works well for the city as well as the seller of the property. That the property owner would be required to submit an application to the lot line adjust, to do the lot line adjustment, but we have agreed to waive the fee as part of the negotiation, or that's what our recommendation is, is the council waive the fee as part of that, because that was what we have been able to negotiate with the property owner. um, because that was what we have been able to negotiate with the, uh, the property owner. Um, in addition to that, city, uh, staff recommends that the council initiate the process of rezoning the property. Right now, it's a residential zone. We think it makes sense, and we're gonna use it for a courtyard, for a transit facility. Needs to be rezoned as public, quasi-public, and it makes sense to do it now, so that in the future, if, uh, somebody buys that property adjacent to us, or another property around there sells, wants to buy the new, new, uh, buyers of those properties will be aware that the city intends on developing that property, and it won't be a surprise down the road. It makes sense, I think, but being good neighbors, it makes sense for us to do that. Um, we don't have any plans to develop the site immediately. Uh, we do, uh, I think it makes sense down the road, I can't tell you when, but this is more of a strategic, uh, strategic opportunity for the city. We kind of fell into an opportunity with a property right in our own backyard that we can hold on to and develop when the need arises, and, and the need may be here sooner than we think, as we have been looking at properties for acquisition for, um, the bus, uh, the transit facility and fueling. So, um, the, the decision tonight is only to acquire the property, and any development of the property in the future would be a separate council action. Um, there's, there's really three things necessary. The purchase of the property, the cost of sixty-five thousand dollars. Lot line adjustment, which is estimated at ten thousand dollars. That, that will require a, a survey of the property to get a new legal description, some other work. It'll probably be less than that, but we're asking the council to authorize that. And then the final thing would be the rezone of the property from, from R1 residential to public, quasi-public. And estimate on that is about five thousand dollars. There's some sequel work that we have to do, some public noticing requirements that have to be done. So the, the grant total is eighty thousand dollars appropriation we're requesting from the council. The funding will come from Fund Nine, which is local transportation funds. They can, can only be used for transportation, transit, roads, streets and roads, types of projects which qualify, this, this acquisition's property qualifies under the, the terms and, and the guidelines associated with local transportation funds. There's a very lengthy recommendation on here, um, but what the, what staff is recommending is that the council adopt a resolution, which does several different things. Approving the purchase and sale agreement with Marjorie Weathers, um, for the vacant property, it's approximately eighty thousand, eighty-three thousand square feet, 401 Poplar Street. Two, authorizing the manager to execute and implement the purchase and sale agreement. Three, waive the fees associated with the application for a lot line adjustment. Four, initiating proceedings to consider changing land use designation of the subject property from residential to public, quasi-public. Five, directing the publication of the initiation of such land use proceedings in the manager described in government code sixty-five oh nine A. And six, appropriating funds for the acquisition escrow cross lot line adjustment, land use proceedings relating to the subject property in the amount of eighty thousand dollars from Fund Nine, local transportation funds. And I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Questions, comments?
I have one comment.
Councilmember Singleton? I mean Shelton, sorry.
Tomorrow might be something. Uh, just for, uh, I know where the property is, maybe some members of the public, but can you just?
Sure.
Kind of describe the land around it, so we.
Yeah, um, on, on Elm Street, there's the railroad crossing right there at the intersection of Industrial and Elm. We have a courtyard. If you're driving west, the courtyard is on, on the left, there's a fence around it. The, the property immediately behind that is what we're talking about, and the only way to get to that property is Poplar. And Poplar is a very unique street. It's off of Oak Street, as you're driving on Oak Street, um, and it heads, heads west off of Oak Street. Very small, narrow street, and there are some houses back there, but it's kind of hidden and forgotten, I think, um, part of, of that part of town. But you drive down Poplar Street, and then the property is on your right, and backs up, it's kind of, uh, part of the property is adjacent to the railroad tracks and part of it is adjacent to our property, so it kind of sits back in the very far corner of that street.
Good. That was all.
Jennifer, any other questions? Um, okay. Councilmember Singleton, please.
Uh, just want to make it clear, the house and barn you, you, uh, talked about is not gonna be part of our purchase.
True.
Uh, is that, they gonna hold on to that part of their land, uh, and just keep the house there, or do you know, the barn?
They're gonna retain ownership of it, and I don't know what they plan on doing. My assumption is they're gonna try to sell it, continue to sell it as a separate parcel, um, but that'll be their, that'll be their decision. We're not acquiring that.
Okay, so they haven't mentioned anything to you then? Okay. Thank you.
Couple of points I wanted to make. This property is not adjacent to any residential housing at this point. That's a question.
Um, well, it's adjacent to the, the house that's there currently right now, and then it does on the east side, back up to some backyards of the homes along Oak Street.
And so those people will have an opportunity to express their, okay?
That'll be part of the public process. We'll send out notices to all the neighbors within a radius, and they can come. That'll be a separate process that we'll go through. Now, this is the first step of the acquisition, and then we'll do the lot line adjustment, and then the rezone will come, um, a few months down the road, and then we'll be sending out notices. They'll have an opportunity to come and, and protest if they're concerned about the city's intended use for the property.
Okay.
Which brings up another question. With that, uh, acquisition, are we gonna, uh, be required to build a sound wall on that, uh, east side of that property?
That'd be part of when we actually go to develop the site. We'd have to do some sequel analysis, some environmental analysis, to determine what the impacts are for noise, air quality, traffic, and see if we have to do those types of mitigation measures. That'll happen at that time, when we're actually ready to develop the site, when we've identified what type of use. If we're gonna have buses and trucks and stuff back there, there may be a need for noise mitigation at that time.
Okay, thank you.
But right up against the railroad spur.
Yeah.
And then finally, I wanted to, uh, make a point that this money would not be coming from general fund money. It's a special fund for, I think you said transit.
Local transport.
Local transportation funds. Any other questions or comments? No, I would entertain a motion on this.
Make, make a motion that we adopt the resolution as submitted by the city manager.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers, aye. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. It was quite a long motion, too.
Uh, next item. Uh, it's Culture and Recreation Department, lighting of the night parade route.
Good evening, mayor and council. At our last council meeting, our staff was directed to meet, uh, with the shop local and the lighting of the night parade committees to discuss a compromise regarding the parade route. Uh, compromise was met by shortening the route on both east and west sides. Um, and I'll be glad to answer any of your questions. The route is in front of you now.
Maybe describe it a little bit to the audience.
It's basically still true to its original route. We shortened it, um, by coming across Fourth instead of going down to Fumasi, off of C, on the west, on the west side. On the east side, what we did is we shortened it by, um, taking off the, the farther north part of the, the turnaround, uh, by coming through Elk Hills.
So it'll go by Marengo Ranch, elementary school?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Comments? I just want to say, Armando, you did an outstanding job with this, given the short time you were, you were allowed. Uh, I think all parties involved were very happy with it. Thank you.
Good. Was about to say the same thing.
And then I would entertain a motion on this.
I move to accept the route to redesign.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Are there any other questions or, uh, Councilmember Singleton?
Madam Mayor, I just want to clarify that the motion includes Part Two, that it authorizes the chief of police to designate you to terminate the parade at any point for safety reasons due to implement weather.
Thank you. I know why that was put in there. If you were on the parade last year, you know why.
I mean, it's not like it was gonna snow or anything, but I was out there drenching wet last year, so is that?
Well, the weather's so weird this year. It might be. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think we anticipate this is gonna shorten a three-and-a-half-hour parade down to maybe a two-hour, hopefully.
Around the two-hour, two-hour and fifteen-minute, uh, parade route.
Yeah, that's better. Thanks a lot. Okay, where are we now? Do we have a first and a second?
Motion and poster and second, yep.
Uh, votes?
Right for roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Powers? Aye. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Uh, both motions, or both items on the motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Armando.
Next item.
We have the Finance Department, fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, pre-audit budget update. Good evening, mayor, councilmembers and community members. Um, presented this evening is the informational report for pre-audit information for the two thousand and ten, eleven fiscal year ending. And as we've been trying to update council on a quarterly basis and the community on a quarterly basis of the financial condition of the city. So right now, what we are going to be discussing is just the information that actually encompasses the entire fiscal year. So it's kind of a summary of everything that we talked about over the last three quarters and everything that's happened in the last quarter. So I'm going to focus on primarily the Culture Recreation Fund and the General Fund, the revenues, expenditures, where we expect to end up. And then I'm gonna touch on some of the other funds, um, briefly. So if you have any questions, as I go through the presentation, please stop me or, um, wait till the end, so whatever style you'd like to go with. So here we go.
Thank you.
Um, we definitely have good news tonight. So on the General Fund, the revenues, we actually came in, starts off with about a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar shortfall in budgeted revenues. But I would like to preface that by saying that we had some expenditures that were incurred, and we submitted claims for reimbursement. We just haven't received those monies yet, so from an accounting perspective, we can't recognize those as revenue. So we will receive them. Claims have already been submitted. We expect that they, we will receive them, but it, it happens after the sixty-day period, so we can't classify them. So there's about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars of those revenues. We also know that there's about three hundred thousand dollars of CDBG monies that we haven't expended in the, in the two thousand and ten, eleven year, and we're kind of pushing that off to the next fiscal year. So we do expect that we'll incur the expenditure, and we will receive the reimbursement as well. So when you take both of those items into account, we actually will end up in the year with a positive hundred and sixty thousand dollars. On the expenditure side, um, there is about an eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar savings. Again, we have some purchase orders and some contracts that we have to continue, so they are encumbered. We also have some capital projects that we're carrying forward into the new fiscal year. But with that being said, we still have a real savings of about eleven, three hundred and eleven thousand dollars for the fiscal year end. Three primary areas. In non-departmental, we have a savings of about a hundred thousand dollars. City manager maintains his contingency, had some monies that were left over. There is other operational line items within non-departmental. In the police department, we had savings of over a hundred thousand as well, from salary savings from vacancies and so forth. And in the other departments, we had some savings in total, excuse me, of a hundred thousand dollars. There was one department that I do want to bring to your attention that was over on the budget, and that was, um, council. It was an error during the budget process, however, we, um, had not budgeted for the, uh, medical insurance for retired council members. So that being said, um, there was an over just twenty-eight hundred dollars, but, um, overall, there really was a savings in operations from, from their department. So overall, the General Fund, we expect that, uh, we will actually end up better, um, in the General Fund by, um, a considerable amount. So I'm very pleased. We have about fifty thousand dollars of all the pluses and minuses, so it was definitely good news to the General Fund.
Vice Mayor, did you have any questions about the council? I did have some inquisitive expressions.
I didn't understand what you were saying about the health for retired.
Sure, actually, we have, I'm sorry, working between glasses and so forth, but we have a retired council member, council member, Seager Casado, who does have, um, health insurance that is provided through the city. When we actually reconciled the number of employees that have medical insurance to our budget documents, we went through and actually reconciled to active employees. We failed to count for one retiree who the city still pays for. We have other retirees, however, they're responsible for their own premiums. We do have one that is paid for by the city of Galt. There was a provision, um, years ago, that if you served on council, I believe it was for at least twelve consecutive years, then the city would pay for their, uh, medical insurance. And so we did not account for them. Otherwise, there were actually savings in operations from the council's budget. So it was an oversight during the budget process. We have addressed that for the current, or will be addressing that for the current year, so that does not reoccur.
And that policy no longer is in effect.
That's correct.
No matter how many years you serve on the council, you don't get that benefit.
Changed in ninety-two.
In ninety-two, okay. Just wanted to make that clear.
Sure.
Any other questions or are you ready to move on?
Ready to move on.
Okay, so let me go ahead and start with, um, the Culture Recreation Fund. The Culture Recreation Fund, from the revenue perspective, we actually ended up with about thirty-six thousand dollars more in revenues than we budgeted, primarily a result of market operations. They ended up with a surplus or over budget by over eighty thousand dollars. So definitely good news there. On the expenditure side, we had a savings of a hundred and sixty-two thousand. Again, we have some contracts that we're going to be pursuing, um, they are encumbered in the amount of fifty-four thousand dollars, but true net savings for the fiscal year are a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So definitely good news. Um, when you take that into account, we had planned on the General Fund balancing out the Culture and Recreation Fund, which that still happened, but we actually were able to transfer a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less because of the increased revenues and the savings in the expenditure line items. So because we transferred a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less, that actually impacted the General Fund as well. So good news there. That basically covers the General Fund and Culture Recreation Fund. Again, those are primarily the two funds that are responsible for day-to-day governmental operations. So if there's any questions, I will try to address those. If not, I'm just gonna briefly touch on the other fund citywide.
And this is all I wanted to, if someone really wants to study it.
Yeah, absolutely. The staff report is on the agenda. Mm-hmm. Okay, let me go ahead and go on. Ben? Gas tax, there was a lot of activity in our gas tax funds, transportation funds, and that's primarily a result of the Central Galt Entertainment Project. So the revenues are, are based on reimbursements, claims submitted, um, expenditures incurred. So, um, some of those were lower because we had expended funds, but again, we submitted claims. We just not have, we have not received a full amount of reimbursement as of yet. Enterprise funds, and again, the enterprise funds are stormwater, water, sewer, and, um, solid waste. The revenues were all higher than budgeted for, um, operational amounts, with the exception of solid waste, we're a little bit lower than that, than, um, the budget estimate. Measure R, good news. We had budgeted, um, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, this is the public safety tax, and we actually received forty-two thousand more than the budget. We received eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, primarily a result of vehicles that are being purchased for, of Galt residents, consumer goods that are being delivered into the community, and online purchases. Impact fees, the only significant amount of impact fees that were received were from the Galt place. We did budget for another project, but that actually did not occur as of June. So we're hoping that that will still happen in the current fiscal year, but again, we were close to budget. One project actually did not pull the permits as estimated. Redevelopment agency, we actually received about three percent more than budgeted. Um, we also had the tax allocation bond of, um, principal amount of thirteen million dollars, so that was something that, um, basically, right now, is on hold pending state actions. On the expenditure side, we kind of touched on that as well. In the enterprise funds, all of the, um, budgets were within, all of the expenditures within budgeted amounts. Measure R, I did want to bring that to your attention, though. We do currently have five foreign officers in there and one dispatcher. The foreign officers are inclusive of one officer that's being funded by the cops program. I think all the other funds are pretty close to, um, budget estimates with no significant negative variances. So again, it's, um, staff's intent to continue to advise council of the financial condition in the community, of the financial condition of the community, but if you have any questions in the meantime, or any questions this evening, I'd be, we're glad to try to address those now.
Questions? Actually, after listening to all that, it sounds like we're in pretty good shape for the Shaper Inn, right?
Yeah, when we went through the reports and, and, um, it's something that the city manager is asking, how did we end up the year? And I'm, I always piecemeal it. It's like, okay, we have to look at the revenues, we have to analyze and be sure that there's no errors, that everything was posted correctly. There's variances. We do reports that actually analyze what's been committed this year. If there's major variances, we have to be sure that it's accurate. And, and so he's always like, you always, you know, keep me in suspense, you wait till the very end. And so he always looks forward to this report, and definitely good news. I was very pleased in, in presenting the report to the city manager and to council and the community. So yes, we are definitely doing well. We still have, um, to be cautious about what we're doing with our funds, but, you know, our reserves are fully funded. This is definitely good news. Ending up in the General Fund with a positive fund balance more than what we anticipated was by fifty thousand dollars is definitely good news. Culture Recreation, when you have revenues, um, that have increased in expenditures, savings, definitely good news, because they rely on support from the General Fund as well. So, um, yes, I, I'm very pleased with the operations over the last fiscal year.
And for those of you that don't know, Inez, she's very conservative, and if she's pleased, we can all be pleased. The other thing, I just want to make a comment that, uh, Inez said we're, she's pleased, we're in, in good shape for the Shaper Inn. And I think a lot of that needs to go to the, um, cooperation and support of our staff. Uh, they've taken furlough days, and, uh, I think we just need to really appreciate the extra work that they've been putting in during this difficult time, and I haven't heard them complain. And usually, I hear complaints from everybody, but I, I think we just need to take a moment to acknowledge that, um, along with the good news that Inez has shared with us. So, let's see, is this just a report, or do we need to accept it?
It's an informational report only.
Uh, attorney, do we need to actually receive it? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Inez.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, where are we now? Communication, do we have any written communication? Nobody? Then we will adjourn to the redevelopment agency, and I would ask for the roll call, please.
Board Member Powers?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Public comments for redevelopment?
We have no speaker sheets.
We have no speaker sheets? Consent agenda, would you feel like reading this?
Yes. We have two items, approval of the minutes of the meeting on September twentieth, 2011, and approval of the redevelopment agency warrants.
Are there any questions or comments on this? Then I would ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
That's all right. I can go ahead. Motion to approve the two items.
If I call you Councilman Shelton instead of Councilman Singleton, will you talk to me? Okay. Definitely innuendo there, huh?
Now you have mine to contend with.
All right. I said I was gonna be serious tonight. Okay, so we have a first, we have a first and a second. Roll call vote please.
Board Member Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Next item, where are we now? Leaving redevelopment? Okay, then we are going to adjourn from redevelopment and reconvene to the regular city council meeting. City courts report.
Thank you. At the meeting of July nineteenth, 2011, the city council established the relocation appeals board to hear complaints brought by residents of the various redevelopment agency housing areas relating to housing relocation. The committee is composed of five members appointed by the mayor and subject to the approval of the city council. The ordinance requires that members be residents of the city and registered voters, although two members may reside in Sacramento County. They should also be qualified to act as members through their experience or training, as in areas of real estate, human relations, housing, urban development, or other relevant professions. The term of the board members will be for four years. The first three committee members appointed would be serving four-year terms. The two additional committee members would serve a two-year term, which would result in a four-year staggered term after the initial appointment. I think I said that right. So at this time, it's recommended that the city council members consent to the mayor's appointment to the relocation appeals board. In your packet, you actually have five letters of interest, you have one in front of you as well. We have had one person withdraw from the packet. Sean Farrell withdrew his letter of intent, so you have five letters before you.
Would you read the names?
I will.
You don't have to read the letters.
We have Mike Guttridge, Terry Parker, Jessica Lingamfelt from FNM Bank. Terry Parker, Sean Farrell withdrew. Mike Guttridge, did I miss?
Rosa Vine.
Rosa Vine, from Levine Insurance.
And then we have Martha Thorne.
And Martha Thorne. She's the, oh, I'm sorry. She's the one that's in front of you right now. She just submitted her letter of intent. Letter of interest, sorry.
So these are, I'm sorry?
So I just wanted to clarify which of the five names will be serving two-year terms. Yes, you have to pick, three of them will be serving a four-year term, two of them will be serving a two-year term.
So the best way to do that is for each council member to pick name and it coincides with ours, is that correct with us? No, different.
No, it's the mayor's recommendation with council consent, so my suggestion would be, not a mayor, is that you make a recommendation as which of the two names be slotted into the two-year terms, and then the council could vote to accept.
It's on you.
Thank you, okay. I'm just going to do it objectively, and I'd say for the two-year term, it would be Rose Levine and Martha Thorne. And the remainder, J.L. Lincoln, Lincoln Paul, Lincolnfield, Lincolnfield, Terry Parker, and Mike Guttridge would be the other term. Was that four or three? Four.
That's three.
Four-year terms.
Four-year.
That's my recommendation to the city council, I'd ask for your approval of my recommendations.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any comments? If not, I would call for the vote.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye, and thank you, council members, for approving my nomination.
I think I just have a couple reminders. On October twelfth, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting will be meeting in the council chambers at seven PM. On October thirteenth, there will be a planning commission meeting at six thirty PM in the council meets, council chambers, and it takes us to our next city council meeting.
Andy?
Liz, if I could correct that, the October thirteenth planning commission meeting has been canceled.
Okay.
Oh, really?
Anything else? Comments by staff?
I have no comments.
We're all commented out.
Do you have anything? Anybody have anything else?
No comments.
All right.
Rick, you have nothing to say. Okay, then I will go to comments by council members and Vice Mayor Powers.
Well, September twenty-first through twenty-third, we attended the League of California Cities in San Francisco, and I think there's truth in the attic that good things come to those who wait. Took me a long time to be here, and I just wanted to let you know how proud I am of our city, and how proud I was then, and how thankful I am to all the staff who have always given us great direction. So I didn't look like a big dummy when I was down there, and somebody'd say, "How's your wastewater treatment going?" And I could say, "Wow, we're way ahead of everybody else." And we've got solar panels, and Randy and I were walking around, and people were saying, "Oh, say hi to Inez." So we heard that a lot, and heard a lot of things from everyone about what a good city we are, and I'm really proud of ourselves. I think that in this downturn, as Barbara said, when a lot of doom and gloom is around, I think that we've got some really wonderful things to look forward to. And I think it's because of the leadership of Jason and all the city managers, and I wanted to just tell everybody on staff, from the maintenance worker to the payroll clerk to everyone, that I appreciate the fact that you work so hard for our city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Singleton?
I'm good, thank you.
I know, who can top that? Councilman Shelton?
I did have the opportunity to walk with Mary Lou for a little bit, and I could tell that you really enjoyed it. For a first-time council member, I could tell that, and it was very positive talking to some of the exhibitors, and they knew Galt, they knew where we were, and then working with staff. You know, sometimes you go and they go, "Where are you? Where's that? Where's that city?" But it was very good, very positive. Felt good about it.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz? Any comments?
I didn't say nothing more than what's already been said about it. Was it enjoyable, very educational? I just was a little upset that I was abandoned, and when it came time for vote, you guys disappeared on us.
I forgot one thing. He gave a really good presentation on their medical marijuana. He had to roll them in the aisles when they needed to, and it had humor, and it was a really good presentation.
Do you want to talk about how you have them rolling in the aisles, talking about, where you aren't sampling any of that, of your products, were you?
Contrary to rumor, we did not give out free samples.
That's good to know.
Something like that, it was pretty funny. It was good.
Any other comments?
I had two other comments. One, on the weekend, I had the opportunity, my family and I, to attend, the Galt Area Historical Society opened their hall, two individuals, and had photographs and had names of all the servicemen that went, men and women that went in the military, and I thought it was very rewarding. It wasn't just my family and I, it was other members there, and it was very interesting having people come in and talk and look at the photos, and didn't even know that, you know, that the photos even existed. They had the annuals or La Salona's, whichever you want to call them, you know, all the way back. They had one that was like nineteen thirty-two. I was amazed, and it was very good. The other thing, as probably everyone knows, my family and I volunteered, so we had the opportunity to go to the homecoming parade and the festivities there, the game, and yes, we did volunteer in the booster snack shack, and we had a good time. The attendance was a little lower than I anticipated, but I know last weekend, there was a lot of things going on. And as for the game, sadly enough, Galt did lose, but I think, all in all, I think everyone had a good time. So, thank you. That's all I have.
A lot of things were going on this past week.
An awful lot.
Mm-hmm. Need any other comments? I would just briefly say that I did attend a meeting regarding the ACE train and the high-speed rail, and Galt is still on their map to put a station on the west side of the railroad tracks down there along Fourth Street, so it would be on Third Street, wouldn't it? So we're still on their map, and they are gonna be releasing a document, I think, next month for us to study. If there is no other business, I will adjourn this meeting at, ah, seven fifty-nine. Thank you, everybody, for coming. How was your reason? You know, I was looking at the, I wanted to... God, I thought he dropped his computer. Hi, Jack.
I turned it way up. Okay. I knew when we started it was too late. Yeah, my ears are flunked.
Mark, thanks for the candy.
I had no idea what you're talking about.
Over here. I gotta go back and get that, because I have about four or five people on the street. What is that, your laptop?
That was my computer. First he dropped it, then dropped it. I just dropped my computer.
Okay, my husband's not.
Yeah, I gotta turn it off.
Hey, Mark, in the morning, Shop Local, eight-thirty.
I'll be there.
I know, yeah, put in a graphic of all the...